Six o'clock, we call the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If you have a little comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Press your comments to the board and onto the audience, and you have three minutes.
Tom had a last-minute thing that he wanted to talk about with the board, so I suggested that you bring it up.
This came up on Friday. We have an issue with three of our offices are max on vacation time, and they're going to lose, stock losing by the end of the month. And with our staffing situation, it's difficult to take enough vacation time. And they actually feel guilty taking it. There's really nowhere to fill. So what I'd like to ask the board is if the board would allow them to each buy a week vacation time? That would get them to the point where they're not in danger of losing any. And by the time they cruise again, we'll have Molly and Anthony back from the academy and vacation time, so they'll be able to take the vacation.
And they haven't been here long enough to qualify.
Correct.
Thoughts?
They can't take it, it's only fair.
The only thing I would mention is you've got other employees in the same situation all the time as well.
I'm one.
Joanne certainly got battered by the...
And I'm currently losing time.
No, Joanne didn't.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Eight minutes. So, I'm sorry, let me just make sure I understand. So our policy is you can only accrue up to so much, and then you just lose it if you don't use it.
Correct.
Exactly. And we don't pay for it, and you just...
I've been here 10 years, and my tenure is in August.
You've been here 10 years, right?
Yes.
Does it once in a while?
Yep. Yeah, when I start getting close, then I'll buy it. This has just been an exceptional period.
Who is also in this situation besides you, can I ask anybody?
I think Peter O'Morn might be.
They lose, yeah, they continuously lose.
But they've been here long enough to take advantage, they can take a week if they want.
They could.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they pulled them in here.
Oh, gosh, yes. But they have just not...
Don't fill out the forms.
And they could take pain lube.
That's what I'm saying, yes, they could, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing I would say is if we offer it to one, we offer it to everybody.
Agreed.
So how about if we say, for the... When do they lose it?
Be by the end of...
February.
Two will be by the end of February, one will be by the end of March.
So let's say between now and March 31st, anybody who is going to lose vacation time, they put in for up to a week of vacation payout? That gives level pay and feel for everybody if somebody else wants to do it, if they become... if they don't use it. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Yes. I think roll call is ready? No, regular voting. All those in favor say aye.
Yes.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I think she should come along. She's entertaining.
Yes.
Anybody else for public comment? No? Next order of business is a public hearing for the police grant. So I officially opened up the hearing. Chief, you want to come speak to us?
You want to pack it with... Tom? So back in, I believe it was September, October, we were informed that our body cameras that we've had for eight years will no longer be serviced by Motorola. So got a quote from Motorola, who now owns WatchGuard, to replace the cameras. So what they have is a program where you get all new cruiser cameras, all new body cameras, the new improved software to download the videos, everything to go with the cameras. And that would be 10 body cameras and five cruiser cameras. And then in three years, you get all new body cameras again. So they break it down, it's $25,000 down, and around $29,000 a year for the next four years. So I started looking for grants, and we found this through the Fed Grant. It's a straight flat $25,000, there's no match to it. So that'll cover us for the initial down payment. And we've been told that we're in pretty good shape to get a state grant for... to match, a 50% match for what we owe for the rest. And then my plan is to encumber the other part and then just pay the whole thing upfront and be done with it. Because I'd also wanted to replace our portables, which are 10 years old now. And I was talking to Justin Bellin, who heads up the communications for the county. And I'd gotten a quote, and I was talking to him about it, and he goes, "Don't hold off." He goes, "We've got a huge bid where we can lease portables at a much lower rate." So we're working on that right now. That's what this grant is, it's a flat $25,000, no match.
Any questions?
No, it sounds pretty fantastic. Can we talk about that instead?
Any questions for the audience? No? All right.
Amy?
Yeah? No, come on.
The town of Lee... The town of Lee Police Board in a minority vote accepted the terms in the Hampshire Department of Justice grant as presented in amount not to exceed $25,000 to upgrading of the Lee Police Department's communications equipment and services. The board acknowledges that the total cost of this project will be approximately $85,400. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
You know those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we have some things to sign, right?
Lots of things to sign as you're here.
Do you want to wait until...
Yeah, it would be fantastic if they just...
All right, how about if we wait until Joe shows up? All right. Next order of business... oh, wait a minute. I will close the hearing. All right, next order of business is regular business to Mr. Andy.
Yes, and before I get to the items I have on the agenda, I'd just like to take a minute and thank the Assistant Town Administrator for the tremendous amount of work that she has put into the town report and the voter's guide over the last few days. I had a lot of information. I was not as much help as I might have been because of the financial changes that we're making and some banking issues. And really appreciated the effort that Denise put in getting those things out.
Sorry, she's more entertaining.
Well, thank you.
With regard to the MTS conversion, we are halfway through the conversion. We've done the first payroll with MTS. We are going to do this week's payroll with MTS and move accounts payable and all the rest of the financial software within the next seven days or so. And we're looking forward to things going smoothly. One of the big drawbacks we've had is with M&amp;T Bank not being able to accept an imported file. I believe we're past that now. Between Liz and Christian at MRI, they have devised a file that is acceptable to M&amp;T. Another concern I discovered over the last week or two is that we didn't have internet access to all our accounts on M&amp;T. They had our checking and savings account, and when I inquired about our money market and CD accounts, they told me that those were non-existent. So I had to go back to the bank with our paper statements and have them find it. So Ben has been working with them, and it looks like we're going to have everything consolidated and available to view online for the first time in a while.
Are you doing dual with the Tyler and the M&amp;T, or are you just totally cut off?
We have totally cut off Tyler from the payroll and are moving towards totally cutting them off for accounts payable, too.
Okay.
That'll happen.
And all that stuff, will you transfer it to M&amp;T? And if some of it's already been done, I assume.
Yes. Yep. And between Liz, Ben, and I, we've been getting checks issued and approved and through positive pay, but it hasn't been particularly easy. Bookkeeper update. We have interviewed probably 10 candidates. We've invited two candidates back for a second round of interviews. I think both are very qualified, just need to meet with them and nail down, you know, what potential starting times would be and what they feel they need to be compensated, and move forward from there. The MTS MRI people have sat in on a good chunk of those interviews with us, including the two people that we've highlighted at this point. And I think we've got one or two more folks we might reach out to, but in a good position at this point.
Are the two that you're looking at kind of local, or...
Neither of them are from Lee. One is from Exeter, and one is from Barrington.
So relatively close.
Yes. Town over. I've got on here the town clerk tax collector. We need to do a re-committal audit when we switch tax collectors. The town clerk doesn't have much to do with it, but I have talked to two accounting firms, and both of them have told me that they would charge around $2,000 to do that.
So basically, what, did they come in and just verify the accounts so that...
Yeah, there's a series of eight reports that the outgoing town clerk runs at the end of the business day of her last day, and they go through and certify an account and make sure that the warrants, the deeds, everything are in order before the new tax collector takes the oath of office.
And when is that officially? It's like, what, five days after the election?
Because the election is uncontested, it can be the day after.
Oh, okay.
And it's important to get done because the tax collector can't accept any tax payments until that has been completed, so you don't want to stall it.
So they'll do it on the...
The plan is to do it on the 15th.
So as soon as she gets elected, Liz will not be able to accept any tax payments on the 15th?
Yes. She will not. Thank you.
How does our search for a new deputy?
They have had a series of interviews. I believe they interviewed three people today.
Okay.
Two? I think they have three that they're going to interview, and they're more interviewing today.
They had a no-show today.
So I met two of the candidates.
And you probably know them, because you know everybody.
No.
No?
Never met these folks. They did assure us that they were residents of Lee, so as required. Under miscellaneous, I had a couple of items. Primary one was Mr. Bullock. We have a $12,000 bill for the electrical upgrades of the transfer station. I think the total, when all is said and done, we're going to probably be at around $17,000 for those upgrades. They both improve the service at the transfer station and allow for the solar power purchase plan to work. We had initially discussed $21,000 total. And Steve and I... Steve had paid the first bill, which I believe was $78 or $7900. We've got the last bill, which is for $12,000. Steve was wondering where we wanted to pay that from. I know we've got some ARPA money left, a little bit there. We've also got the transfer station equipment fund, but he wanted me to ask the board what their preference for paying for the upgrade was.
Didn't they... didn't we put somebody aside in ARPA, two?
I believe we did, yes.
I don't remember how much it was, but...
I will... I'll move forward, the preference being to pay for it out of ARPA.
Yep. Mr. Tappin, do you... by any chance, you know, bump your head?
Not up to bump my head, no.
Fair enough.
I'll pull that file. And that was really all I had, although I did hear some board members' concerns about the audit letter. I am concerned about that, too, because some of those items I had specifically emailed our auditors about.
Yes. So, I don't know, maybe we can wait until Katrin's back? But yes, I had some concerns, too, because I thought some of these were already taken care of.
They were.
Definitely taken care of.
We had moved the check stock. We had removed myself from the ability to access the payroll.
I'm sorry, so I'm confused. So they just came in and, what, copied and pasted a last year's letter? Like, they didn't tell why they didn't do this correctly?
I don't.
Assuming you...
I'm...
And we dealt with this stuff, so...
I'm going to give them a chance to go through item by item and explain to me why they're... because they were in our office for a week and a half with Joanne and the town clerk and other folks, too.
So why didn't you... I assume you wrote the contract in many ways. Find out what the response is, maybe they can give us a revised executive summary. If not, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay. And that was all I had, other than... There's no excuse for them, but we had them under the gun because we wanted the audit for the town report.
Well, I think we want that every single year, so I'm not sure. Why it took us so long this year, was there some problem, or...
No, I think...
We're always chasing after them, no matter what audit we have.
No matter what we shot at, we're always chasing to get done.
Is this the third year with closing the center, or a second?
This is the first year.
All right. I think going forward, next time we do this, that there's a stipulation in the contract that we signed that the information has to be provided by December 31st or something like that? Because there's no reason, I would think, if they come in August, unless we cause a problem, of course, but that's not usually the case.
We didn't cause any delay at all. In fact, the one thing they had correct in their letter was that the town was very cooperative, and there were no items that caused delay for them.
So maybe the next time, I don't know if you guys... I don't know if you're like Joanne with the little post-it notes, but see if we can put that up so that next time you remember that, put that in there. Because there shouldn't be a reason, I would think.
Yeah, and I'll review the contract, make sure it's not in there as well.
And speaking about the town report, Denise and I had a conversation, I don't think it was on the phone, I think it was emailed. I don't know what it was, but can maybe next year, so there's not so much pressure on her to do this, that we start a little bit earlier? Even if you have to put in just basically what the board said, "Okay, this is what the warrant is," and make those small changes? Is that the delivery session? Because I've heard from numerous people she was stressed out. But if we start earlier, that'll give her more time. Plus, also dealing with all the people that have to provide her information, so...
They do start early.
Well, I don't know.
I know.
I don't know what the delay is, but maybe you and Andy can talk to that.
We need to tighten up the reins, is what we need to do.
So... Because there's no sense... Because by the time delivery session, that should be the last thing that you're chasing. It obviously wasn't. Anything else?
No, that's all I had.
All right. Anything in the consent agenda you want to take out?
No.
I'm going to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Things for us to sign.
Here's a giant pile. Do you want to take that?
I already did that one.
No, thanks.
Oh, this is that...
This is the grant that we worked on signing, because I was...
Regular consent agenda. I would mention that I've had no one come forward for the non-public session. Unless the board has a reason.
Now I have to read the little sticky notes, too, to see the little instructions? Jeez.
I think it was necessary, so I put a sticky on every page.
Well, that's good, but then now I have to read the little...
I know.
I almost ran out of stickies with that document.
There's some in there inside one of those folders, next to the line there.
Those almost got stolen.
Well, they did. They think they were hers.
We need to go to another municipal association meeting so we can get more stickers.
Maybe next time the chief can get a grant where we don't have to sign every single bloody thing.
They've actually changed the whole grant process for everything.
Yeah?
So we don't have to sign the page?
The highway safety grants we get for the speeding DUI patrols, I used to just be able to sign off on them. They have to now come in front of the board.
So that to sign, too?
Yeah, there's one on the bottom of that. Should we all... both of you in the show every page?
Yep.
On this little tiny line?
Well, that's why I made mine as small as possible. I'm on page 2037, just so you all know. Do we have workman's comp for select people that get carpet tunnelled because of signing all these things?
Yeah, I actually listed you in the audit composition this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Clamps up permanently.
I assume on page 29, it's just me?
Yes.
30, is that the chief? Or I have to sign that?
I think it's Tom. No, that's you, too. Yep, that's you, too.
Does he get to do any work?
No.
Well, there is a...
I got the grant.
There is a question.
That's only a small part, this is more work.
A question, like a yes or no question, that I did not answer on the next page.
Okay.
We can go over that.
What?
Another one. This, now they want the address.
You like your personal?
Name and address of the agency.
You can just put 249 K in, fine, right?
Yeah, but the problem is I have to put that down.
Oh, I can tell them. Leadership, how do you sound on this slide? You've been up lots of times.
So page 34 is yours. Oh, God.
That's what I was going to go over the chief.
So I don't have to answer the questions, right?
No.
But I have to sign the top of that.
Yes.
Page 37, certificate G certification? Nothing.
That's none, that's you, yeah.
Oh, thank God. And I think I have to do anything else? Oh, look at this. Oh, even more.
I don't know why, we picked two or three fire department ones. The fire department ones asked for the town administrator or town manager's signatures. That's it.
Yet again.
Yeah, I would mention while you're signing, too, that the DPW director has had some promising candidates come forward for the building maintenance supervisor position.
Oh, fantastic.
Denise had changed the advertising around a little bit.
Oh?
What did she put? Free massages at lunchtime, and blood provided every Friday or something?
No, you just changed, like, where your advertisement?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Which made a big difference in both of those job searches.
Where did you change it to from?
From the municipal association. I use the municipal association bulletin board classified ads. I use the special UNH and Community College system. Jack Bing also emails everyone that's been an alumnus of those schools in the last eight years.
I switched it to a...
Indeed get the most interest.
Okay. No old business, no new business?
No.
You don't have anything for non-public?
I don't, if the board doesn't.
Okay. I have one thing. Two meetings ago, we asked for a meaning of the financial planning tool. As far as I know, nothing's been scheduled.
Nothing has been set at this point.
So can we put that on the, like, front burner?
Yes.
Other things, but...
I'll put that on the front burner. And the other thing that we had discussed was building, communicating.
Yep. So those two things, because we have to get moving on that. Financial planning tool, as soon as you possibly can get it, that's not burning, burning, but I think we need to go over what's in there and what's not. Maybe look at it in terms of funding and stuff, so...
Okay.
But if we can find out from Mr. Tappin and our group, then we can move to the press. Paint the numbers.
I have nothing.
630, oh, my goodness. All right. All set? Okay, motion to adjourn, or a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
I'll just come down tomorrow and go with that.
Yeah, sure. I think I should put...